Okay, so regular meeting of the Minuteman School Committee is called to order at 6:32 PM on Thursday, April 25. Jeff is otherwise occupied this evening, so I'll run the meeting and hopefully it will go smoothly. Help me out if I get into trouble. So we would need a motion to adopt remote participation.
So moved.
Second.
And we'll do the roll call vote as required.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica LZ Bolton, yes.
Steve Will Do Conquered, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlene here.
Yes, I just don't see myself, but oh, now it's changed my name completely. All right, sorry.
All right, Sharon Mostel Lexington, yes.
Alice Luca Stowe, yes.
Mr. Superintendent, have we had any public comment?
No, it's been submitted.
Thank you. We have a consent agenda. We are not going to be dealing with the December 12 minutes at this time. The December and January minutes will come back to us later. We're going to look at the February 5th, February 6th, and February 7th, 2024 minutes and approval of a list of monthly donations. We get a motion on those four things.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any comments on that ish item?
Nope.
Hearing none, let's take a vote.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica LZ Bolton, yes.
Steve Will Do Conquered, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Oh, you're unmuted.
Charlie Cabral Line Castor, yes.
Sharon Mostel Lexington, yes.
Alice Luca Stowe, yes, thank you very much. So we have a Chair's Report for the Good of the Organization. We have, does anyone have anything for the good of the organization? This was something that was added to our agenda by former member of the school committee many years ago. Sharon?
I know that Katie's going to go into it further, but I would just say that there were a couple of great things happening at Minuteman recently, like that play. I saw Sarah and Charlene incredible. And then I'll let Katie get into the whole mock crash, which was also incredible, but big shout out to Mr. Tildsley for, Katie can get into details, but there was a little snafu the morning of the mock crash and Mr. Tildsley for the win donated his car that he was going to get rid of to be trashed. So they could do the crash. So.
Wow, well, don't, don't take all of Katie's special.
Don't worry, there's a lot more fun stuff with that. So.
Okay, so thank you for that. Anything else?
I brought a, I brought a prospective future Minuteman student to Twelve Angry Men with, with me. A young, young person who's actually still in middle school, but I've known her parents for quite a long time. She's a Lexington resident right now. And she, she enjoyed the play. So that was kind of fun.
Great. Anything else? No? Okay, hearing none. The next item is possible school committee superintendent retreat. Either Superintendent Mahoney or Superintendent Electriscoll, would you like to speak to that?
I'll start. I believe there was a suggestion by the Chair about trying to schedule a retreat with the incoming superintendent, myself in, in school committee in, in part to discuss what the open issues are that the that Superintendent Driscoll will be having to deal with coming into the, into the district. And perhaps a session on setting goals so that when we prepare for our administrative retreat this summer, Superintendent Driscoll will be able to frame those topics with our administrators around the goals that were established by the school committee. We, I have not, I am not aware of any discussions around specific dates scheduling that. So I can't talk to, to that. Perhaps Heidi can add a little bit more perspective to it, but that's the gist of it from the comments that I recall the Chair making at the office. I think it was at the office.
Thank you. Superintendent Electriscoll, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I do think it would be wonderful to have an annual retreat. I think it's an excellent practice and typically that would happen around July. But we have a large committee with lots of schedules. The other option would be to wait until the joint, I'm not sure how many of you went last November to the joint superintendents organization and school committee organization training. Sometimes school committees with their superintendents combine that training event and spend time in the evenings planning. So it's really for the, for all of you to think about.
Okay, so if there is something to be scheduled for July, that would have to happen pretty soon, being that it's in April. Last year, one person from this committee went to the November meeting. And we typically have had between one and three people go. It would be unusual for the whole committee to go to that. Just because that's how it's been. I won't say that we won't do it. It hasn't happened before. So I don't know. Do you, Kevin and Heidi, do you want to like figure out with Julia about putting out a scheduling email so that we can get the valve rolling or?
We certainly can. We'll reach out to the Chair to get his thoughts about time and maybe some agenda topics, but we can certainly start the, the scheduling process. Julie will follow up with that after touching base with Jeff.
Okay, great. Anything more on that topic? No? We're on to the principal's report. Katie Bouchard.
Great, thank you. All right. So tonight Riley is not able to join us, but River is nice enough to step in and cover some of the first sections. So River will be presenting on this prom decorating committee and the prom updates, the first robotics club updates and some senior projects. So take it away, River.
Hey, everybody. So prom, prom is approaching very quickly. I still have no suit, but we'll figure that out. So it is again Friday, May 10th from six to 10 at Sky Metal Country Club in Noshua. So far, we have sold 247 tickets and that was until our April 19th deadline. Some people are reaching out hoping to get some more, so we will open one more opportunity to buy tickets this Friday from eight to midnight. And now we have prom decorating committees with some help from Ms. Bordeaux that started this all out hosted in the art room, which gets students involved with the process and allows everyone to be included in the decoration of prom. So today they worked on some feather centerpieces. Excuse me, and are putting together mini champagne flute towers that will have little pearls inside that we have planned out. And then they're going to host another meeting next Thursday to finish up other decorations. And then FRC team, Alpha Centauri, they absolutely killed it at competitions at Revere. I'm somewhere in that picture. So we went in to Revere and WPI. At Revere, we ranked 29th, which was a little unfortunate due to some circumstances. But we did really well. So we were very proud of ourselves and excited for the next weekend at WPI where we were 16th, much better. And got picked for an alliance with Team 157 in 3323. Funny enough, 157, Mr. Skogstrom's, our math teacher's son was in it. So kind of got to join in on that. That's our robot right there. No resale value is its, its name. And yeah. We like to thank our mentors. They were super great help this year and everybody's super excited for next year.
Great.
And then senior projects, seniors began presenting their senior projects this week. I don't know. Click one more times to see if the video is going to play. It might have sound with it. So that's me riding the famous go-kart. That's the only video I had with it. So that over there with the flowers, that's Arias from DVC's Senior Projects, beautiful artwork that's out in our hallway. Then there's Will Flanagan over there presenting today for robotics. Yeah, I presented last Tuesday and now, now it's glad it's, glad it's done, glad it's over.
Excellent. Any questions for River on either the senior project or the prom or the FRC?
I have one question, Katie. Sarah Montague. River, I'm curious, what does it mean you were asked to become an alliance? What does that mean?
So throughout our competition, you go through 12 qual, one team, your team goes through 12 qualification matches. And within all those qualification matches, depending on your wins and losses, you're going to be ranked in some place. And then at the end of the qualification matches, we, the first eight teams, they get to pick two other teams to be teams with them for the next like playoff matches. And then we were some, so we picked down, they picked down, 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 and we got to be paired with a first pick for the seventh team.
Great, thank you.
I have a question. I have a question for you. I would like to know how much fun was that riding that car?
Oh, I had a blast. I personally, I grew up riding go-karts and everything, so I was, I was waiting to get a chance to ride it and it was great.
Okay.
Very fast.
That's great.
Great. Anything else, River? All right. Thank you very much, River. Appreciate it. We also had a couple of weeks ago, we celebrated Minuteman's 2024 Outstanding Vocational Student. So this is a yearly event for a whole bunch of schools. They send their, their outstanding students as well. It's held at Mechanics Hall in Worcester. So our student of the year was Larissa Maya. She's from Culinary. She has a fantastic GPA. She takes numerous AP and honors classes. She's a member of our Culinary Arts Advisory Board. She is a student who was out on co-op at Heinebrook Country Club. She has held different positions in the school such as a student ambassador, member of the GSA, and also competes at Skills USA. In her spare time, she volunteers. Her post-secondary plans, she's planning to go to the Culinary Institute of America in Hyde Park. So we're so happy to have a reception that could celebrate her and a lot of other students that are doing great things in vocational education. So it's always a great night to celebrate with the students. We have staff go and then members of our family go as well. So it's a great night of celebrations. Any questions? Yep.
It's not a question, but that's a fabulous hall. And if anyone hasn't ever been to the music concerts there, they have some of the world's most famous musicians playing there for the half the price you'd go to in Boston and the acoustics are almost perfect. Absolutely unbelievable.
Yeah, I grew up there, right? Just amazing. And a lot of history there too. Charles, Charles Dickens lectured there, Freud lectured there. Just, it's an amazing hall.
Yeah, that's very cool. Great. The next one is a bonus add-on because this just happened yesterday. So we had Mrs. Christine Grady and members from Hanscom Air Force Base. We've been doing quite a few little collaborations with Hanscom, which has been great over the past couple of months. She is the spouse of the 12th Vice Chairman of the Joint Chiefs of Staff Admiral Christopher W. Grady. So it was a great honor to have her visit Minuteman. They were on a tour of some different STEM locations in Boston's companies and schools. When she was at Minuteman specifically, we had her tour advanced manufacturing, our welding programs, engineering, robotics and culinary. So our students typically put on some demonstrations for our visitors. We also had some senior projects out. The go-kart was out. I didn't want her to ride it, but it didn't work out, but I did try just to show her how cool it was. And then, you know, the program, the programs of the students, per usual, did shine when she was there. She loved, loved, loved talking to our students and just getting to know our instructors and the program and everything that we offer at Minuteman. So it was nice to have her and some members of the the force visiting that day.
Cool. That's great.
And then the next up is the approval of the 2024 to 2025 school calendar. So this would require a vote.
Okay, let's get a motion on the table first thing.
So moved.
Prove the 2024-25 school calendar. That's, was that Sarah?
Yes.
Okay, and second by Steve. Any discussion? No questions for Principal Bouchard? Okay, let's take a vote.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica LZ Bolton, yes.
Steve Will Do Conquered, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Line Castor, yes.
Sharon Mostel Lexington, yes.
Mostel Luca Stowe, yes. And we're getting very good at that vote, which is important because we have a few coming later. Okay, next thing.
Sure. So I'm not going to go into too much detail about the mock car crash because unfortunately our students that were most involved in planning this are actually at Skills USA competing tonight. But I did want to give just a brief overview and a shout out to everyone who was involved. This happened earlier in April. The amount of collaboration in planning, it was student driven. So it was awesome to see our health instructors and our health department worked with our assistant principal to help coordinate. We reached out to the town of Lincoln, the town of Lexington. The Med Flight was actually from Hanscom Air Force Base. So we collaborated with them as well. As it was mentioned, Mr. Tildsley donated his van for the Drawers of Life. So it was like, you know, even though we had a little bit of a hiccup in the morning, we were still able to make it happen. The students not only planned it, they also starred in it. So they were actors throughout the morning. We had presentations prior to the event. We had videos that we showed the kids and let them know what was going to be happening. We went outside, we saw the event unfold. We came back in, we debriefed the event with the kids and also the first responders that were there. It was just a great morning. It was about an hour and a half all together. We had our juniors and senior students participate. And we typically would do something like this in the fall, just because we have a lot of celebratory events coming up, prom and graduation. Just want to bring to attention, you know, the importance of safe driving and distracted driving, whether that's alcohol or drugs or texting or anything like that. So it was just a fantastic day. The students absolutely shined. The staff did a fantastic job. As Sharon was mentioning, her, her son was very involved as well. It was just a great day for Minuteman.
That's great. Any questions for Katie on that? Sharon?
Katie, the only thing that I would add is like, I was so impressed by the students in general who were watching. Like, they were outside for quite a while. I mean, and there was a little delay in the helicopter arriving and like you would have thought that they would have gotten a little antsy, but they really, I was so impressed with how serious they all took the whole event too, and they weren't like joking around and playing, but it was just a really incredible thing to watch and like knowing how much work has gone into that was really cool to see it come to fruition. They did an excellent job.
Yeah, they, they did a great job. And it's funny, the helicopter ride was 30 seconds. It was from Hanscom to Minuteman. That's how long it took. Any other questions? All right. And then last up, as we mentioned, Minuteman had their annual spring play, Twelve Angry Men. It consisted of over 15, we had 15 actors. We had over 20 students that were working behind the scenes. If you've never been to Minuteman and seen their theater before, it is a technical theater. It's a teaching theater. It has so many cool features that the students get to learn how to use, you know, from the lighting boards to the different sound switches and everything in between. It's really a whole integration of having this play unfold. We have our carpentry department located right next door to our theater. So they can build the set and wheel it in and just have easy access. So you can see the first picture on the left. You can see the background of the actual backdrop of the, all the wood panels that they put up. They created a whole courtroom scene and the table actually came up into the audience, which was super cool. So you're extremely close to the actors. They did a wonderful job. I don't know how they memorized so many lines. But you know, some of them had very, very long, emotional, intense monologues. It was very impressive. So kudos to everyone who was involved in the play. Mr. Donovan, we had Mr. Anthony Bradley as well, and a bunch of other teachers assisted. Cosmetology helps out every year with the costumes and the hair and the makeup. But it was just a great night. It was pretty much a full house both nights. There's a lot of parents there, a lot of students there and a lot of staff around.
Cool. Some of the best plays I've ever seen have been at Minuteman. Yeah.
Any questions? All right, then the principal's report is complete.
Thank you.
Hand was raised.
Sorry?
Charlene's hand was raised.
Oh, sorry, Charlene. Nice to see you.
That's okay. It's, it's catch as catch can. How many people are actually on your screen? I don't have a question. I just wanted to commend the students. I watched the play too, and I just wanted to tell them that I was very impressed and don't know how they did it because I'd be like, I could not remember all of this.
That's great. Okay, well, moving on, this is, this is where we're really going to get to show how we can vote. Because the finance report is up and Mr. Will Do, take it away.
Hey, thank you. Finance Committee met on April 1st and 18th. In addition to our usual approval of bill warrants, we had a presentation on the 18th of our 2023 audit done by Markham. And those of you who have been on the committee before will say, well, who's Markham? Don't we usually use Lance and Heath? Well, they, they have merged with Markham and makes them a little more diverse and, and add some of their IT abilities during the audit. And another reason they merge is young people in college are not going into the accounting field anymore. So probably be a lot more mergers as time goes on. So at any rate, I, I think the game plan is for Scott McIntyre, the principal who, who did the audit, to make a presentation at our May meeting. And I could just say on behalf of our finance committee that there was no nothing glaring in, in the audit and it, it just appears that we have, our house is in order and we have a real fine financial team. The rest of the items we, we looked at and reviewed will be discussed just now as we go through it. And I'm assuming Nikki is going to talk about some of these things and, and I can talk about the finance committee's recommendations.
Okay, so when we get to all of the things that have to be voted on, we'll get the vote on the table before discussion, just so you know. So next item is town meetings update.
All right, so I will take it away if that's okay, Mr. Will Do. So we have town meetings upon us starting next week. We have already attended Lexington, which was our first back in March, on March 20th. We have some upcoming meetings. On Monday, we have Conquered. And on Wednesday, we have Arlington, and then we have five town meetings on May 6th. So we will be dividing and conquering. You know, Kevin will be presenting at, at one of our towns. I'll be attending a town to answer questions and a big shout out to Michelle Rosendas for offering to help us out with another town as well. And then we'll also have Stowe's meeting the following Saturday, May 11th. So you know, just a refresher for anybody or any of the new members, we do need to have two thirds votes of all of our member towns at town meetings. So any of the towns that have requested us to make a presentation at a finance or town meeting, we have coordinated and put together presentations and we work together with the school committee members. So we'll certainly keep you updated at the next meeting as to which towns have approved and not and the status of our budget.
Thank you. Any questions for Nikki about that? None, okay. Next thing is the Minuteman Retirement Board COLA memorandum.
All right. I'm going to share my screen so everyone can see the memo.
I'll type Nikki.
Wonderful. So this is a memo from the Minuteman Retirement Board. The Minuteman Retirement Board covers members of Minuteman that aren't part of the teachers retirement system. So this was just informational, doesn't require a vote, that the Minuteman Retirement Board, which I am one of the appointed members on, voted today a 3% COLA increase. It's very consistent with the social security increase of 3.2%. It's on the first $14,000 of the retirees amount. So it's certainly not a huge number, but you know, helps every year for the retirees to get up to 3%. So we voted today the, the 3%. And just in relation to the budget, it is factored into the PARAC funding schedules, so it won't change necessarily any of the contributions in the budget going forward as it's already factored in. The Minuteman Retirement Board is 99.7% funded as of January 1st, 2023. So this is a very well-funded plan and you know, we're confident in the, the 3% increase for our retiree members.
I have a quick question for you. Many, many years ago, we had, we used to have a number of people whose only retirement was like $14,000. They were very low paid from, they retired a long time ago. And I was wondering like, how many people are still on our books that are in that category?
I don't know if I'm in that category. I can certainly get that information for you, but there are about 30 to 40 members currently in them.
Okay.
Yeah, and Alice, I remember when I, when I first started working in the States some 40 years ago, that not only individuals were retired, were actually their, their income was capped at like $25,000. So if you made $50,000, you weren't getting any retirement benefit off that delta, but that law changed kind of in the late 80s, early 90s where everybody's three highest years count towards the retirement now.
Right. Okay, thank you.
So there is 37 members. I just calculated it out. And if there was ever a decision to change the $14,000, that would be a vote that would come back to the school committee.
Thank you. Next thing is prior year invoice.
We've got, oh yeah, prior year invoice. And let me just say before I turn this into Nikki, that the finance committee was very confused by this and we, we ended up discussing this over two meetings. And I think we, we finally got it, but we'll, we'll let Nikki explain it a little.
Learned a lot about solar. So this prior year invoice was brought to us from Direct Energy. It is dated back from 2021 when our former director of finance, Bob Gerardi, was in charge of the finance office. We did see a signed contract as well, so certainly a valid invoice that we never received. But what it is in relation to is a school building project. So it was the purchase of a 10-year renewable energy certificate, which they call a REC. And this was facilitated by Beth Greenblatt, who works with Beacon Integrated Solutions. She's one of our energy consultants and Greg Joint, who was one of the architects for the school. So solar has two different things. There's energy savings and then there's also how it affects the building. So the intention of the school building project was for the building to run partially on solar. So when they were looking at that and how it related to the MSBA project, the purchasing of these recs increased the reimbursement rate if we were LEED silver certified. And that's leadership in energy and environmental design. So with the purchase of these recs, which was approximately $9,000, it got the building LEED silver certified. And that also increased our MSBA reimbursement rate, which gave us an approximately $2 million increase. So this is certainly a great benefit for the school. And you know, important to the MSBA project. Once we signed that contract, they actually submitted the documents to the MSBA project. And it will be part of the closeout that will receive that additional funding. So due to that, we're requesting the approval of this invoice to pay Direct Energy. The second part of the document was a request from Mr. Stuland. There's a lot of numbers and information. So he was wondering in relation to the solar he was wondering in relation to the solar on the building, are we seeing some energy savings? So what we did was an analysis over the past two years, which is our billing period here, and the total actual demand. And how that reflects our usage in our energy. So we buy some energy from Eversource, and then we also generate energy from our solar on the building. And we buy that from Sole- Select at a decreased rate. So we buy that at point zero five versus Eversource, which is point zero eight for their supply. And then we have the total kilowatts and estimated savings. So where I want to bring you is the the net annual savings here. If you compare twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-one, when we didn't have solar, we are seeing a twenty-three thousand dollar savings. And then if you compare twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-one, we're seeing a fifty-one thousand dollar savings. So over the last two years, we've seen a seventy-five thousand dollar savings due to having solar. And it's actually a locked price for the next twenty years. This deal that was negotiated. So in relation to is has solar been working? Is it beneficial for the school? It certainly has been, and I certainly anticipate more increased savings because they locked in at such a great rate over the next eighteen years. And in total, we're seeing demand savings and energy cost savings. So in addition to the reimbursement from the MSBA project, we're also seeing some great savings by having solar on the delta.
So maybe we can have a motion to approve the prior year invoice from Direct Energy as presented. Is there any problem with inserting from Direct Energy into the motion?
So moved.
I, yeah, I I would just add that the the finance committee recommends approval of this prior year bill, and I think to simply put, nine thousand dollars gained us two million in in the building project.
Okay, so we have a motion from
From Sharon.
From Sharon, a second from Charlene. Okay, any discussion on the motion?
I think Steve hit the nail on the head with that one. Spend to get two million is great.
Anybody else? No? Okay, let's take a look.
Hamner Saxon, yes.
Sarah Montague, Arlington, yes.
Erica LZ Bolton, yes.
Steve will do Concord, yes.
Maggie Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Erin Musto Lexington, yes.
Alice Lucas, so yes, the motion passes. The next thing is the third quarter general fund report.
Well, I'll try to increase this a bit. So as you know, we present quarterly our general fund report as well as our revolving fund in our student activities. Our general fund is what the school committee oversees. And they oversee it by function code. So on the left-hand side, you'll see our role labels, which are our function codes. Those are our DESI state function codes that we have to do external reporting based on. So that's why you see the breakout the way it is. Our chart of accounts is made to function this way. So our external reporting to DESI is made more simply. So if you look at this first budget, it's the sum of our budget as you voted it originally. We have a sum of adjustments, so we do make some budget transfers throughout the year. Anything ten thousand dollars and more is presented to the school committee, and that will be the next vote that you'll see in the next item on the agenda. The third column is the sum of the budget with the adjustment. So it's our current budget. Some of YTD, YTD year-to-date, those are our transactions. Those are the amounts that we've spent so far. So of our thirty million dollar budget, we have spent just over around twenty-one million. The next column is our encumbrances. Those are anticipated expenditures or purchase orders that we've maybe placed the order for or anticipating having those expenses through June thirtieth, but we haven't actually paid them out yet. So you'll see here almost seven point eight million dollars. That leaves us with just about over one million dollars in our ending balance column. So what you'll see here is we really look at the function codes to ensure that there isn't anything in a deficit, and anything that's in a deficit, I will address tonight and the reason for it. So the first item is function code twenty-four fifty-one. It's classroom instructional technology. What you will see here is that in the past, we have coded our one-to-one student laptops in district-wide informational management function code fourteen fifty. DESI has come up with a new function code that reclassifies any one-to-one laptops to this classroom instructional technology line. So we have the money sitting in a different line. This is strictly a reclassification to properly classify under DESI's state function codes, the one-to-one student laptops for our external reporting. Function code thirty-three hundred is our student transportation. We have had a number of foster care transportation that have been needed, that were unexpected and unbudgeted. So this transfer we are requesting is to cover those unanticipated transportation needs from our health insurance line, which, as we have discussed in prior meetings, we have been seeing a savings in that line. While we budgeted a ten percent increase in our FY twenty-four budget, the health trust actually voted at zero percent. So we do have some excess there that's allowing us to transfer and cover these unexpected foster care costs. Our final line is down below function seven three zero zero. We have seen an increase in copier use, and per our contract, we pay an additional amount per print or per copy that in that amount is exceeding what we had originally budgeted for. We've been seeing an increase year over year since we've got back from COVID. So we have factored that into the FY twenty-five budget along with the foster care and the technology lines, so that the FY twenty-five budget should really be in a good place and not see any of these deficits going forward. So overall, we are sitting with just over a million dollars as we're going into the fourth quarter. And we'll continue to talk about that as we go into the budget transfers and the following agenda item, which is our preliminary E and D, where we're proposing some transfers for year end.
Okay, so does anyone have any questions about the third quarter general? After that will be the transfers vote. Do you have any questions for Nikki about this fund report? Doesn't look like we have any questions for you about this, Nikki. Okay, so we'll move on to the next thing. We're going to put a motion on the table before we have the presentation and discussion. We're going to move to approve the third quarter general fund budget transfers as presented.
So moved, and the finance committee recommends.
So that's Mr. Ladue, who made the motion, and who was the second?
Second.
Pam, okay, go ahead.
So the first three transfers, we have already discussed as part of the general fund report. The first being our IT reclassification, the second our unbudgeted foster care transportation. The third is our copiers and that the excess printing. That's coming from our utilities line. We are seeing anticipated savings in our utilities line. As you know, we've discussed that the solar has certainly been helping see seeing some decrease in utilities. The fourth transfer is the only one we haven't talked about. Unfortunately, our utility all-terrain vehicle needs replacement. It was vehicle that was used during the school building project. And it pulls the equipment onto the synthetic field, so they need a specific vehicle because of the synthetic field. They have the funding in the maintenance of ground function code. However, because it's over five thousand dollars, it needs to be classified as a capital asset or and equipment, so it needs to be classified in the seventy-three hundred function code. So this is just a reclassification in order for them to get this replacement vehicle to help pull the equipment onto the field.
Any questions for Nikki? I don't see any questions. You've been so clear, Nikki. Nobody has any question.
Thank you.
Way to go. Okay, so let's take a vote and let's, for the record, in the minutes, show that we're talking about two hundred eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars. So let's take your vote. Go go for it.
Hamner Saxon, yes.
Sarah Montague, Arlington, yes.
Erica LZ Bolton, yes.
Steve will do Concord, yes.
Heidi Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Erin Musto Lexington, yes.
Alice Lucas, so yes, yet another miraculous unanimous decision by the Minuteman School Committee because of the excellent work of this state. Okay, we're on to, just for the record also, it's seven fourteen. Preliminary twenty twenty-four excess and deficiency E and D.
All right. So as Mr. Luca noted, E and D means excess and deficiency. And when you think about what excess and deficiency is, if you think about any company, your personal bank account or your paycheck, it's, you know, how much money or revenue that you've received, less the expenses. You have a net number, right? So that's really what we're talking about, is that bottom number. Revenue minus expenses is our excess and deficiency, the excess of what we anticipated. So where Minuteman started up here was about one and a half million dollars is where we started from last year, was the funding we had compared when our revenue less our expenses, that was our net last year. What we voted on for the budget was of that one point five million to give back to the town six hundred fifty thousand out of the certified excess and deficiency when we voted the budget. So that really brings us down a little bit as to where we want to be. Statutorily, our excess and deficiency fund can't be more than five percent. So we really are trying to, in this calculation, get a sense of where we're going to end up at year end. Our school committee has recommended to try to stay between three and five percent. So when you look at this amount, this seven hundred seventy-one thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars is a transfer that we're proposing. This has been talked about numerous times at the school committee, the finance committee, and with all of our nine-member town town managers who have supported this plan. Our chapter seventy-eight came in in excess of what we budgeted last year due to the governor's budget coming out in March, and we voted us voting our budget in June. So what we have proposed to the town managers, the finance committee, and now the school committee was a plan to pay off our anticipated remaining debt of the MSBA project that we're not anticipating being reimbursed by the MSBA to finally close out the project. As you know, we have a two point eight million dollar ban, so that would bring us down to about two point two, two point three million dollars. And when we close out the project, which is slated for the fall of twenty twenty-four, our reimbursement should be able to pay off that ban. And we should be able to finally be done with the MSBA project. So what we're what we're proposing with this excess funding is to pay down some debt and interest. And additionally, transfer money into the capital stabilization fund to total the seven hundred seventy-one. So when you calculate that amount down, you know, the six fifty and the seven seventy-one, we that we're proposing, we're bringing our, you know, funding in our E and D down to a much smaller number, having about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars left. But that's just counting last year. So now we're adding in any excess revenue that we've seen this year. So we have seen excess revenue in our chapter seventy-one regional transportation as well as interest income. You know, interest rates have been increasing compared to the the last few years. We've seen very minimal interest as well as some Medicaid that was unbudgeted and miscellaneous revenue that was unbudgeted. So if you take out the seven hundred seventy-one thousand, we've really seen in excess of revenue over our budget of about, you know, five hundred thousand. So that almost kind of takes away what we've given back to our member towns. And then we also did a preliminary estimate of what we're seeing as far as the budget. And as you know, we mentioned before, our general fund budget was about one million dollars as of March thirty-first. This number was a little more updated, so we're anticipating approximately a million dollars excess at the end of the year. When you do that calculation in relation to the five percent, what we're proposing is any of the unallocated monies from our current budget FY twenty-four be transferred to our capital stabilization fund as well as our OPEB trust fund. We feel as though those are responsible decisions in relation to Minuteman's campus and any future capital needs of the campus, as well as trying to fund our OPEB other post-employment benefits. We currently have a liability of around twenty-three million in our trust fund is closer to a million dollars. So our plan and the school committee's recommendation is to be more responsible in funding that, and you'll see that in our FY twenty-five budgets going forward. But this will certainly help to get there. With this transfer, all of this calculation, it gets us down to what we anticipate our ending balance is going to be just around one point five million, which is four point nine seven percent of our budget. So with these transfers and our estimates for year end, these transfers, proposed transfers in relation to the excess chapter seventy and to capital stabilization in OPEB will put us just slightly under the five percent, four point nine seven percent. So that was a lot of numbers. We did put together a letter to the school committee explaining all of that. And the motions that we're recommending, these motions do have to go to our towns in relation to amending the budget. So what we're proposing is amending the budget by the seven seventy-one to eleven, increasing the budget. And what we'll be doing is we'll be voting to use seven hundred seventy-one to eleven of our certified excess and deficiency. So it will not have any effect on any of our member town assessments. It's just reallocating, you know, the budget increase and then our excess and deficiency increase. And that does have to go to our member towns as well as the transfers to our capital stabilization and OPEB trust funds. So that's what we're proposing to you tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Any questions? I I have one question for you, Nikki. The letter, the wording in the letter, the motions, they're different than the ones in the agenda. Slightly different. So which ones do you want us to vote?
Which whichever you'd prefer, they both essentially say the same thing. I think probably the agenda is more straightforward, not as wordy as the the amounts, the motions in the letter. We just wanted to make sure we were very clear for the committee, since it is a very big topic with a lot of different numbers.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll stick with what's in the agenda. Dude, I don't see any hands up for questions. That was very thorough. So let's move on to approving the motions to amend the FY twenty-four budget. So we're going to take four votes in a row.
Okay, Alice, I'll move the first one, and the finance committee has recommended all four. So I move to approve the amendment to the FY twenty-four budget to thirty-one million. So I moved to approve the amendment to the FY twenty-four budget to thirty-one million oh eighty-seven five thirty-six as presented.
Is there a second? There were several seconds. Okay, any questions about that? Hearing none, let's take a vote.
Hamner Sackton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve will do conquered, yes.
Hey Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Sharon Musto Lexington, yes, and thank you Nikki for making this all make sense.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes. Mr. Ladue, do you want to make the next motion?
Yes, I would like to move to authorize seven hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and eleven dollars. From the certified excess and deficiency fund to reduce member town assessments for the FY twenty-four budget and the finance committee unanimously recommends.
There's a second. Montague was the second. Let's take a vote.
Hamner Sackton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve will do conquered, yes.
Naisha Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Aaron Musto Lexington, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes. Mr. Ladue, take it away.
Thank you. I will move to transfer four hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars to the capital stabilization fund. And the finance committee unanimously recommends.
There was a second.
It was Ms. Cabral.
Let's vote.
Hamner Sackton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve will do conquered, yes.
Naisha Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Aaron Musto Lexington, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes. Mr. Ladue.
And finally, I moved to transfer four hundred thousand dollars to the OPEB trust fund and the finance committee unanimously recommends.
Second by Cabral. Any questions? Let's take a vote.
Hamner Sackton, yes.
Sarah Montague Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve will do conquered, yes.
Hey Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlie Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Aaron Musto Lexington, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes. We are on to the third quarter revolving fund report.
I just wanted to give a quick shout out to Michelle Rosendez, who actually gave us the idea of the utilizing. The excess chapter seventy or excess revenue budget to. Actually pay down the debt and bring that to our town managers and our finance committee, as well as Kevin Mahoney, having his. Great, you know, finance mind has been such a blessing this year to be able to bounce ideas off of and talk things through and assist. With everything. So big shout out to them. Certainly couldn't have put this all together without them. So. Oh, sorry. Was, did any, was anything gonna say something?
No.
Okay, perfect. Our revolving report. So these are. Are revolving funds. The general fund is what the school committee. You know, votes and oversees are revolving funds are different funds and. Why they're called revolving fund is that ending balance each year rolls over to be the beginning balance in the next year. So we certainly have different funds. And this report is very similar to our general fund report with our beginning balance. The revenues we've received this year in the projected revenues through June thirtieth. What we've expended or paid this year. And then our encumbrances, again, those anticipated expenses. Or the purchase orders that we're waiting on the order to come in that haven't been paid yet, to have a projected ending balance. So what we really want to see here is that all of our funds. Are positive and not in a deficit position. Explain which funds they are and a little bit about each one. Our community ed fund really is mostly just summer school now. What we will see is that we've had some revenues coming in already for summer school, you know. In July and August, which will be our next fiscal year. But, you know, great turnout. We've also received grants over the past two years, which have helped. Keep the costs down and assist in paying some of our instructors. So. On this, you know, balances. In certainly a great position. Our MTI program is our next fund, Fund sixteen, which are post-secondary program. Those are the tuition-based. Programs that we run at night. MTI also has received numerous CTI grants. And those are tuition-free programs. So those are not included here, but. Our additional adult programs that our director Nancy. Palladino. Runs and we've gotten a great amount of money to run those programs. So what you'll see here is the tuition-based programs. You'll see the beginning balance with our anticipated revenues throughout the year and expenses. We are projecting to be almost broke even, you know, just a little bit over. We'll certainly be keeping an eye on this as we move forward to ensure this doesn't slip into a deficit position. But the programs that are running are auto, cosmo, electrical and plumbing. So certainly. You know, some great programs. To help the adults, you know, really get back into the workforce. Our facility is revolving is our fund thirteen. The school committee has asked for the athletic fields to be broken out. So you'll see here our projection for just the athletic fields. This is a question that's often asked, you know, of our towns. And you'll see we do have some great projected revenue throughout the year. And then our expenses, our big expense or encumbrance here is that we're planning to reserve money. As we've discussed, to pay for, to put in a stabilization account to pay for the future maintenance. Or replacement of the turf. We've also seen some great rentals, you know, for our general rental fund, whether it's our gym, our Paul Revere room. Our theater has seen a lot of great action. So, you know, the, the new building has certainly attracted a lot of people to come. See what we have to offer in rent our space. Our fourteen. Function is our trade accounts and those are all in great position. No deficit balances there. Our capital fee is. Is set by the state. We bring it to the school committee for transparency, but. As far as the calculation goes, but this is an additional fee that any out-of-district students pay. To help offset the capital costs of the building. So this remaining balance is what we project to put into the FY twenty-five budget. To offset the, the capital costs to our member towns. Our out-of-district tuition, again, set by the state. This is the out-of-district tuition that any out-of-district students pay. Again, this is what we will plan to offset the FY twenty-five budget. But as we've discussed, as more member town students continue to take up our incoming freshman classes. We are going to see these numbers continue to decrease and our budgets will, in the next few years. If the trend continues, be solely with our member towns. And last but not least, our food service program, Fresh Picks. We have seen some, you know, some great revenues. From this compared to prior years, you know, we are seeing that there's been quite an increase. Because of the free meals and we've also gotten some supply chain assistance. Grants that have helped offset some of the food costs. So I don't anticipate seeing. This amount of growth year over year, but certainly, you know, the students have been happy with the, the product that has been. Here at Minuteman, so. That about wraps up the revolving report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Nikki? I don't see any. I'll shout if I missed you. No, okay, moving on to the third quarter student activity fund report. I just wanted to make one remark on the revolving funds. Because if Jeff were here, he would say. I know, I don't think he's gonna watch the video. So Jeff, this is for you. So it used to be pretty ugly picture in the revolving accounts. It was totally cleaned up, very nice picture now. Thank you for everybody who cleaned it up. That's it. Okay, on to the third.
Jeff, Jeff says that at every one of our PIPCOM meetings when we review this.
Okay, well, that's it, Jeff. We're, that's it. Okay, so third quarter student activity fund report.
All right, these are our student activity funds. And they, the auditors recommended we show this to school committee for transparency and then send it to our advisors quarterly as well. So what, you know, they're tracking is their balance. It can be matched up. You know, what we're seeing here is any of the, whether it's athletics or clubs, if they do fundraising. And again, you know, very same similar setup, the beginning balance, revenues, projected revenues, expenses. Encumbrances and end balance. Again, we're not seeing any deficits here. As far as the student activities, it goes through the same process as any of our other warrants. There are additional controls when it's relating to the student activities that. There needs to be at least three sign-offs from the students as well as the advisor. And our business office and it goes through the approval process in our warrants of going to finance committee and being approved. So. You know, there are certainly great controls around this money and it's particularly sensitive because it is those of the students. So just wanted to show this report and happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on these? I'll make a historical note about this. There was a time, not decades ago, but maybe a decade ago. The, around the state, there was a huge problem with these and it's really nice to see this clear accounting of it. They used to have. Budget versus actuals that they would show in some school districts and it really didn't tell you anything. And it was, it was really pretty sad. So we're very lucky to have this very clear accounting of what's happening with the students' money. And of course, it is required, but it is great to see it. Such a good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's the student activity fund report. So the next thing is the interim superintendent's report. We're going at a good clip here, so it's now seven thirty-five and that leaves plenty of time for the interesting reports coming up.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to start with the principal search process and. Superintendent-elect Heidi Bristol has joined us and has been coordinating a very thorough. Process that I believe has brought in a number of stakeholders in the Minuteman community for input. And we want to give the committee an update on that process. So Heidi, I'll defer to you to. Brief to the committee.
Thank you, Kevin. I appreciate it. I'm so happy to be here. The committee and the community has been absolutely wonderful to work with. Clearly, everybody's very excited and invested in the process. Just so you know, I'm sure you saw the communication that was sent out with the tentative timeline of activities. That was shared with the staff, that was shared with parents, students. We did have informational sessions to the, with the community on Zoom and in person with the staff. So that we could explain what our tentative process was. We had many applicants. In order to support the interview committee. The survey that went out asked everyone what they're looking for in a principal. So that we could get information to enhance the job description, those things that are unique to Minuteman. So we created a candidate profile. And the candidate profile, I want to say we probably had upwards of sixty people contribute. Very thoughtful contributions. Peter Kelleher, who's the president of the union, actually sat with me and we looked at every single submission to make sure that our candidate profile. Did in fact match what the majority of people shared in that. In the survey, let me just look at my little screen here. The big picture key themes that came out in the candidate profile were communication, consensus building. Passion for CTE, high expectations, loves kids and supports diverse populations. And specialized program, programming like EL and special ed and so forth. We get back to the Zoom so I can look at.
I think she must have had a technical difficulty.
Yeah, sometimes if you turn your video off, it improves the audio on Zoom. There she is.
No idea where I went, but I'm glad to be back. Can you hear me? Okay. So. We, where, where was I? That was so strange. Drew, did you do that? We came together, they reviewed the folders and then based on their feedback as individuals. We came up with which candidates we wanted to interview. So we had invited six candidates to be interviewed. Oh, one more thing, we also contributed to creating some consistent questions based on those six key themes as well. We did not interview six people. Two people backed out of the interviews, accepted jobs at other places. One got, ended up staying in their current district. So we interviewed. Four candidates. They were absolutely wonderful. And the interview committee then provided incredibly thorough feedback. Which leads us to where we are now. We are not sharing names yet because all of the. Candidates have not been informed, but we, it looks like we are down to two finalists who will be interviewed by the E-Board. Next week and separately by Kevin and by me together. And I do want to give a shout out to everyone on the committee, if you don't mind. The committee was a wonderful representation of our community. I feel like people were very respectful. They felt comfortable with each other. And they were in the very capable hands of Amy Peralt. Who managed the evening of interviews. And of course, Julia made sure everyone was taken care of. In, in the, in the meeting. Someone on iPhone said Dr. Peralt, I think. I'm not sure who iPhone is. Okay, so let me read the committee. Names here. Okay. First, Rose Romano, who's the administrative assistant to the principal. Jamie Donahue, who's our freshman student representative, Matilda Trudell, our student representative, who's a sophomore. Riley Truesdale, who's our, our student school committee representative, also our junior representative. Erin Palmer, who's our Minuteman parent representative. Regina O'Brien, who's another Minuteman parent representative. Diane Dempsey, she's our guidance lead. She's also from the MFA. Patrick Rafter, a biotechnology teacher, also from the MFA. Chris Danielson, who's an English teacher, also represented, selected by the MFA. And Matt McLean, facilities coordinator, Brian Tillsley, the assistant principal. Alice DeLuca, as you know, school committee and the group. Was led by interim assistant superintendent of student, student services. Doctor Amy Peralt, who I am very thankful for. Does anyone have any questions about the process? Okay, we're hoping that within the next two weeks, we'll be able to. Come forward with our next Minuteman principal. Come forward with our uh next Minuteman principal. Thank you.
Any uh questions for uh for Heidi?
Just Sarah, just a comment. Sounds like a great collaborative and inclusive process. So thank you.
We've been uh really happy with uh the way the uh, again, everyone stepped up to participate. It's kept everything moving along uh quite nicely. So um. We'll uh continue to update the committee as we progress. Um, wanted to at least let you know where we are in the process, so. With that, um, we wanted to also provide a, uh, an update on our athletic program. I think we had an update back in the fall when we. Shared with you the uh participation numbers that, that we had back then and how we had such a high level of participation. So we thought we'd bring the athletic director, Mr. Fusco, back um. To give you an update on what's happened uh over the winter and now that we're into the midpoint, pretty much of the uh spring season. So. Mr. Fusco?
Oh. Thank you, Mr. Mahoney, and uh good evening, everybody. Um, I thought you guys just wanted me back because you enjoyed having me back.
That too, John.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So, yeah, so I'm just gonna kind of touch upon uh a few things that uh is still going in a. In really positive direction with athletics. Um, the winter sport wrap up, uh, the spring sports have begun, uh, exciting news that we hired uh. A tr- an athletic trainer, Jesse Warren, very excited uh to have him on board and he is, has started this weekend. He's already, he's already uh worth his weight. Uh. And I'm Michelle Resent as we talk about the weight room. And also we had uh the coaching staff completed uh some CPR certification done. Uh, late, late winter, early spring. So our coaches are getting uh up to date with their CPR certifications, which is also very positive. Um, I wanted to make some notes that uh was still increasing in our participation. Winter was up by twelve percent. And um, you'll see some slides coming up about each one of those individual sports and how that went. Um, our spring sports i- is increased by seven percent, but I think w- we could be looking at. Um, a much higher percentage in the future as there are, there is some interest on adding other. Um, sports and activities for us i- in athletics and, you know, tennis is something that's been brought up, track and field. Possible boys volleyball there and, and there are, you know, uh some options and there are, could be others. Uh, winter season wrap up, uh hockey had a great, uh, I considered it what was, was a great season, um, and, and what, it can't be marked by. The, the record because uh they played every single game and every single game was very close and uh they competed. Um, every of the. Uh, home and away games, which was amazing. A great uh shining spot was that Shane Carter was recognized at Bruins. Game this year as one of the MIAA sponsored uh sportsmanship awards. So that was very uh, very ex- that's a very exciting thing that we had with the hockey program. They also had three league all-stars. And one thing that I think is important for them is uh. A few folks that, you know, just kind of think about is, is there is a need for more ice time practices for these, 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 these young men. So, um, that's something to probably consider. Um, swimming had their own uh trials and tribulations this year, but they persevered through renovations to the Hanscom pool and swam at Medford High. Uh, during tough hours, Saturday uh evenings and Sunday mornings. Were the only times they could get in the pool, but Coach Farc was really uh persevered by getting them working on, on land. And doing exercises, working in the weight room. And it shows, you know, the girls came in fourth in the CAC meet, the boys finished second. And Abby Padland set a school record uh in a two hundred individual medley and a five hundred freestyle. We had two all-stars this winter. Girls' basketball, another stellar, stellar year. Um. They had twenty athletes for varsity JV and um they finished the season fifteen and five. Um, they were league champs for third year in a row, qualified for the state tournament, won a home game. And as you can see. Uh, our league MVP in the picture, uh Muji Vader, who's only a sophomore, also was featured by the Boston Globe. Um, in an article this year. And we look for, for many more great things there. Um, boys' basketball, uh, I, a- as, as coach, I will just say this, this is one of the most enjoyable seasons I've ever had. Um, had a great group of kids who did some great things. Uh, we finished fifteen and eight, qualified for the state tournament. Won two games, upset, upset a, a, a very, very challenging managed team to advance to the Sweet Sixteen round. Um, we, it, and it sparked a lot of interest and had fan bus to go play. Boston English into Boston and they filled a fan bus and had, the fans were great. And we had two league all-stars uh with, with the CAC. Cheer was probably one of the, the big surprises. We had a, 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 a big increase. Uh, they were up to twenty-two athletes this year. Um, they cheered at both home games for boys and girls' basketball. And one of the things that we're hoping. Is that, you know, they're, they're building a program with a new coach and. We can see the enthusiasm by the number of athletes that they're starting to regain. And we're looking to see them get back to doing cheer competitions next year. And we're also. Um, looking into, they have a need for new uniforms because the, the numbers are increasing. So if anyone has any questions, I'd love to answer.
It's, um, Mr. Fusco. Fusco, I, I just had a few questions. Um, you said the, the. Ice hockey, the team is in need of more ice time. What, what could we do as a committee to um make that happen?
Well, I mean, it. Unfortunately, hockey is probably the uh most expensive sport that we have due to the ice time. So having, you know, getting more funding for it would be probably the first thing I could say. Um, and, and, and um. Then the, the, oh, along with that comes trying to find. A locale of, of ice rinks, you know, but knowing that, you know, knowing what the budget constraints are, I mean, how much can we, we look for? So. It's something that I think would absolutely help the hockey program um in numbers and I think, and success in terms of. Of, of their wins and losses because they're, they're right there. Coach Bolduc did such a wonderful job this year. Um, but it, it is difficult um to try to get ready for games when you're practicing one hour uh a couple of times a week. And um, it, it would be, you know, but we would really have to start, you know, venturing into looking into ranks and, and coming up with times and. And, and in a feasible location.
Yeah, thank you. And um, could you speak to the situation with the pool also, um? Like, is there maybe a solution to that or?
Yeah, no, that, that was, so I'm sorry, I guess I didn't really explain that. Yeah. Uh, unfortunately, Hanscom and, and they're doing the right thing. They had maintenance on their pool. And they, we thought we might be getting it in, but they started in September. And we weren't going to be able to use the pool. So we, we, we kind of knew that ahead and, and Nikki Devero and I. Searched high and low to find pools and we contacted district uh facilities and hotels and. We tried everywhere and um, you know, we ended up, uh, the Medford, the Medford High uh athletic director uh. And, and the pool director kind of worked with us and they, they found us a couple of spots that we could get the kids into pools so they, at least we had them swim. So we should be, I, I, I'm, I, you know, I'm, 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 under the understanding, we should be back at Hanscom Pool next, next year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions to the athletic director?
Sharon.
Sharon?
Um, just regarding the, the cheerleading outfits, you know, there was some, oh, I feel like my computer.
Whoops, I think you froze. Yeah, Sharon, we lost you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can now, yes.
Okay, now I'm gonna turn my camera off and see if that helps because you guys are all freezing. Um, regarding the cheerleading um. Uniforms, I know there was some talk among some parents that I had seen, some people that I knew that it was unfortunate for the kids that they. A lot of pe- a lot of the students didn't have matching uniforms. Is that accurate?
Yes, yes. So we, we're, that's, that, that is, that's one of the priorities we are working on.
Uh, any, anything else? Okay, if there's nothing else, perhaps we can move on to the next items. Thank you very much, John. Appreciate the report.
Thank you, folks. Thanks, Ben.
Um, item C and D will be covered by uh Michelle Resent. Um, she'll be talking about our wellness and fitness center and the uh recycling program rollout. Michelle, all yours.
Evening, everybody. I'm gonna uh share my screen. Now, you guys see my full screen?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna be talking about our wellness room and our recycling program, two very exciting things that are happening in Minuteman. Um, as we speak. Can you see the wellness room? I don't know what you're looking at right now.
No, we're, we're seeing your title, we're title slide, it looks like.
There we go. Now do you see the wellness room?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So this is the current status of our wellness room. A lot of our equipment was outdated. Um, we really didn't have the necessary equipment to properly train our student athletes as well as our um. Phys ed, um, physical education um students. So what we did is that um, we kind of made this a priority this year and. We're able to secure funding um to replace uh the equipment in the wellness room using our Esser Three Grant. Um, which it falls right into the category of um health and wellbeing of students um. And um, you know, physical support um for our students. So this is the current status of our wellness room. This is our um new design. And if you take a look at it, you can see that there is um. Three different half racks. Um, we have a, a couple of treadmills, a sled mill. Uh, two rowers, a bike, um, and some additional equipment. Um. This is a little example of the new equipment that we will be receiving in the wellness room. Um, we also secured additional um. Flooring for the wellness room, which will be installed. Um, and this was because we had, we worked with um John, our athletic director. Um, Heather Later and Sophia, Sophia Papakristos, our physical education teachers. Um, as well as um. Um. One of our um staff members who is extremely um into health and wellbeing and very well versed in. What students need um in order to properly train for their sports. So um, the flooring was a big um. Was a big addition for us. Um, and that's because the, the thickness of the floor that we have in the wellness room right now. Um, isn't conducive to actually working out on it. It's not really thick enough. Um, and it could cause a bunch of different injuries for our students. Uh, we made sure when we were choosing this equipment that um, we talked with a, a couple of the different coaches and had an idea on what. Training equipment would best help um their student athletes. For example, one of them is, we have a um, that's one right here is a ski trainer. Um, and that actually is, is beneficial for swimmers as well, um, working that part of their body. Um, eh, and like you can see here, here is your rower. This right here is a sled mill, um, which is an upgrade on a treadmill and it's. Generally used, um, it's like, uh, almost like the mach- the piece of equipment that they take out onto the fields that football players push forward as they run through the field. Um, this is what that uh piece of equip- equipment is supposed to simulate. Um, we have some additional bins and balls, um, not pictured on here because I just didn't have the space for it. We have upgraded um to some kettlebells. As well as some additional free weights. Um, and then you see here is that we have these multi-purpose, multi-person. Um, uh, pieces of equipment that allow for, you know, mu- a, a multitude of different um strength training um. Exercises. That's, that's pretty much the update on the wellness room. Uh, we are, have already received the flooring. Um, it's expected to be installed. Uh, we are selling off, um, which you'll receive in a little while, um, probably at the next school committee meeting. We're selling off some of the equipment that's in the room right now. Uh, and then once that is gone, we will be installing the floor. And then the additional equipment that we've secured will be coming in in July. To be installed in late July. So it will be um fully furnished and ready to go for the start of our fall season. The other exciting thing that's going on at Minuteman is um, we've kind of um revamped the recycling club. Um. And one of the things that came along with this was, you know, uh, we had a teacher, um, Jennifer, um. I'm blanking on her last name right now, Ga- Gailey.
Danley.
Yeah, and um she was really great. She got in touch with um some state um organizations that helped us secure. Some additional bins and um that you can see in the picture right there. Uh, they also helped us step through the process on how to, you know, properly uh create a club as well as. You know, to move away from where we were previously. So just a little back history, there has been a um recycling club or a green club. Um, previously, but the, the burden of collecting the recycling was more, was. What the focus of the club was more so. So we, in an order effort to step away from it being. Um, purely a club about walking around and picking up recycling. Um, their focus is going to be on sustainability and other ideas and helping the environment. As well as they're, you know, getting together right now to start um planning for a more extensive program uh next year for our recycling. And it, eh, in, in order to do that, what we did is that we worked with our cleaning companies, uh, company as well as our maintenance staff. To um, secure that they would be the ones that would be collecting the bins and um. Disposing of the recyclable material. We also um received another um Matt. McLean worked extremely hard and he, we um signed another contract with a dumpster for just the recycling. So there's a, it's a designated spot for it. Uh, we are hoping that that will be a wash. Um, the cost of that dumpster, um, minus the weight of those recycling items in our regular trash um cycle. So we're predicting that that would be a complete wash. Um, and it, so it would be a real benefit for Minuteman because we'll be recycling at no cost. Um, just, this is a kind of a view of the dumpster day one. Um, so that really shows the dedication and commitment, I think, from Minuteman to get this started. Not only the students, we had. Um, Jennifer and Matt were really spearheading this, but Ms. Bordeaux um was a, a part of this as well, but we really got buy-in from our cafeteria as well as our culinary. Um, staff and, you know, they're, they're going as far as breaking down their stuff and disposing it um during, at their. Day, at the end of their day. Um, since they have such large amounts, they thought that that would be a. A better uh approach when it came to those two areas. Um, our pilot program is single stream right at this moment and. Um, we have bins as the one that's pictured right in the superintendent uh business office right there. But we have them in the main office, the dean office, special education office, the super. But we have them in the main office, the dean office, special education office, the superintendent business office. IT, DVC, Cosmo, environmental, and then in culinary area and cafeteria area. Uh, the plan for next year is to roll out that there will be something in every single shop to be collected. That way, we're making sure that we're hitting all areas of the school and, and really um diving into the consumable uh product that we have. That can be recycled. Um, the items that we're recycling right now is empty plastic, metal, glass containers, clean aluminum foil, mixed paper. And flattened fabric. So um, that's all. Does anybody have any questions? Kind of.
Uh, it's not a question, really. I just remarked that this has been something that's been of interest to many, many members of the Minute Man community. For a long time and I'm really glad to see it's um come to fruition. Thank you.
No problem. I, I mean, really, it's Jen and Matt worked extremely hard on this.
Uh, great. You, any other questions from Michelle either on the uh recycling program or the wellness center?
All right, great. Good, good reports. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Michelle. We've been doing an awful lot of work uh on um cybersecurity and infrastructure related. Uh, issues. Drew O'Connor is our IT director and I've had numerous discussions about it. He's taken the ball and really uh run, run with it. And um he'd like to give a report on the work that he's done so far and the status to date. So, uh Drew.
Uh, yeah, happy to uh share some of the work that we've been doing. Um, I'm just gonna share my screen. And this one. Okay, um, so I'm gonna give you a little bit of a technology update. Um, specifically around cybersecurity and some uh capital planning and infrastructure work that we have been doing. Um, so cybersecurity is the kind of the big buckets that we worry about. Phishing, it's constant and we are constantly trying to provide training. Um, we were selected. As one of the um districts that is participating in the twenty twenty four municipal cybersecurity training grant. Um, so that provides uh cybersecurity training mostly around phishing um to our staff members. Uh, teachers um are eligible for ten PDPs this year, which is great and that I'm hoping that that will uh increase uh participation. Uh, we're gonna roll that out soon. I'm just waiting for the uh, the portal to be set up by the state. Um, ransomware is another thing that we worry about quite a bit. Um, that's when, you know, someone comes in and encrypts all your data. And then asks for a ton of money to give it back. Um, there's a survey that I can share with the school committee if they would like to see it. Um, it was done by Sofos, which is um our um cybersecurity vendor of choice. Um, and of the, the three thousand people that they surveyed, they surveyed about three thousand IT professionals um globally. Um, about five hundred of those were um K twelve districts. And about eighty percent of those schools uh said that they experienced some kind of ransomware attack last year. Data exfiltration is also a scary thing, especially when we're talking about uh student data specifically around like. Uh, IP data, five oh four data, the civil rights stuff. Um, we had an issue, there was an issue that we did not have an issue. Um, there was an issue in uh Los Angeles Unified School District a couple of years ago. Uh, someone got a whole bunch of uh student IP data, testing data. Um, and then threatened to release it and I think they did actually release some of it. Because LA refused to pay the ransom, which is the standard now. We don't really pay the ransoms because then they just keep coming back for more. I wanted to make sure that we were clear on uh the difference between a cybersecurity incident and a cybersecurity breach. Uh, a breach um has uh legal ramifications. Um, so if someone were to say the word breach, um then we have to have a, a much different conversation than if we had an incident. Uh, we do have cybersecurity insurance. It, it is part of our um umbrella policy. Um, some districts have a separate cybersecurity policy. I think that we are okay with um the coverage that we have right now. Um, and then another thing that we have to worry about is a vocational school. Um, we have several, um, as you know, student run services. Those student run services um take credit cards. Um, so we have to worry about PCI compliance, which is. Uh, what does the P stand for? It's card. It's uh, it's about credit cards. I always forget what the acronym is. I apologize. Uh, we are fully PCI compliant in uh the ones that I manage are the website, uh Cosmo and Culinary. And then automotive is actually gonna get a new card reader soon and then we'll take that over to. We had a cybersecurity audit done uh in December of twenty twenty three at Kevin's recommendation. Um, thankfully, there were no external vulnerabilities found. Uh, we did have some internal vulnerabilities, which I'm not gonna go into. Uh, in a public meeting, um but happy to talk to anyone. I can give a copy of the report um to you if you would like to look at it. Um, most of them were abated immediately. Um, some of them we are still working on a little bit. Um, and we'll probably have that done by the end of the summer. Um, we, as you know, we're a Microsoft district, so Microsoft has this thing called the secure score. Um, and it's a representation of your organization's security posture and your opportunities to improve it, uh improve it. I apologize. Currently, we're at thirty six point one four percent, which admittedly is not great. Um, for organizations our size, we should be up around seventy, seventy-five percent. A lot of that was because we didn't have the appropriate licensing uh to address the issues. Um, we did acquire uh those higher tier licenses. For the IT staff. Uh, so now we can start to push out um some of those fixes. Obviously, you know, they want you to buy their product to raise your score, but a lot of it is good stuff as well. Um, so we're working on that as well. Thank you, Sharon. I appreciate it. Payment card industry compliance. Um, we also applied uh in March for the municipal cybersecurity grant. Um, so they had four buckets of things that they were really willing to fund. We were hoping that it would cover some of the um our cybersecurity proposals. For next year. Um, the federal government and the, the state aren't really covering those specific things. Um, but the things that we applied for are um an incident response plan of which we currently don't have. Uh, we don't have one. So uh that would, if we had an incident, you know, it's a step-by-step response. We have it printed out somewhere just in case the computer stopped working. Um, so we, we have a, a hard copy of it somewhere and uh all of the steps that we would need to go through contacting, you know, the message. The fusion center, just run by uh the state police, uh contact the multi-state um uh security. It's MSI SAC and I, again, I'm really, I should have written, see, the next slide, I wrote down the, what the uh acronyms stand for. Because I knew I was gonna forget. Uh, we also applied for some tabletop exercises, so that would be for uh the administrative staff and IT to work through. What we would do in case there was an event, so kind of practicing it. Um, complete our multi-factor authentication rollout, which is uh one of the biggest things that's gonna bump up our Microsoft secure score. Not everyone currently has multi-factor authentication on. Um, and the, the version of MFA from Microsoft that we are using is actually deprecated by them pretty soon. Um, they're not gonna allow a text message code anymore because of the MFA options. Um, that is the least secure. Um, because it's very easy for someone to clone your phone number and get the code sent to them instead of you. So we would, we're probably either looking towards uh, you know, like through the Outlook app on, on someone's phone. Uh, you get a, there, a number pops up on your screen, you type it into the thing, it scans your face or it uses your fingerprint or whatever else. How, whatever biometric you have on your phone and then it lets you into your account. Um, we also have some other options. Uh, for um staffers who might not want to install something on their phone, we can give them like a physical key uh that they have to plug into their laptop. They won't be able to sign into their uh stuff on their phones. So, you know. That's a conversation if we get the grant. If not, we'll just go with the Microsoft products, which are fine. Um, and then the other thing is MFA for non-user devices uh which include like the security cameras, the point-of-sale systems. The viewboards, the projectors, everything in the building that is connected to the internet. Um, that doesn't necessarily require someone to sign into is kind of like a, a security black hole. Um, so we applied for that. We're hoping that we'll hear in May. Um, it was about, um, the cap was two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and I think our grant proposal came in somewhere around a hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars. We also, the same company that did um our cybersecurity audit, we are partnering with them to do um. A review of our practices and procedures in IT. Um, based on some of the, the frameworks, the NIST cybersecurity framework, which is the National Institute of Standards and Technology Cybersecurity Framework. I wrote down the acronym. Um, the Center for Internet Securities, CIS, and COBIT, which is the control objectives for uh information. And related technologies. So that we're basically gonna work through all of those frameworks and standards with the company and write um. Practice, best practices and procedures and have like uh all of that documented for the IT department. Um, on May fourteenth, Minute Man is hosting an event in partnership with Sofos um for neighboring districts. Um, IT directors, superintendents, business managers, the people who are gonna get um called in if we do have some kind of incident. Um, and it's called SOC versus the clock. SOC is Security Operations Center. Um, so it's basically like, if there wasn't a, an incident. What is the Security Operations Center doing? How are we tracking it? How are we finding it? And then what would we do afterwards to uh remediate it? So that's gonna be a cool event. Uh, I think as of right now, we, we shared it with, you know, the districts in the area. Um, and we have, I think, about fourteen people coming from ten different schools uh signed up for, so far. And we still have about two weeks left for people to sign up, so that should be a good event. Um, and we do have uh MDR budgeted for next year. Um, uh, that is um managed detection and response. Um, so that would cover um all of our endpoints and our online environment. So if there's any kind of incident ever, they're watching it twenty-four seven. They'll usually just remediate it. And then send us an app, an action report afterwards and say, these are the things that we did. Um, if it's a bigger issue, they'll call us. But it's nice to have um a peace of mind that someone is always watching. Um, and I, I thank you for uh supporting that in the budget for next year. Uh, next slide, Drew. Oh, um, on top of that, I do wanna say that um we did have a small incident today. Um, and we did remediate it quite quickly. We had a, a phishing attempt that um. Got through and many people probably got an email asking if someone wanted to review an RFP. It was just a, a, a fake PDF um that copied your uh, your address book. And then sent itself to a million other people. Um, so that person's account did not have MFA turned on. Uh, it will tomorrow. And uh, we should be good, but we caught it in about two hours and turned it off. So folks probably would have caught that in about five minutes um and notified us immediately. It's not a huge deal. Phishing happens all the time. It didn't, nothing else really was affected except for a lot of people got an email. Um, some other capital planning things that we've been talking about. Jeff um has asked us to start developing a long-term plan for technology replacements. Um, as you know, we've started to um budget for the student laptops annually, as Nikki said, uh tonight in the correct account code. We're starting a staff laptop replacement for FY twenty-five. Um, but then we need to start talking about all of the other things. Uh, some of this is included in uh what Alice will probably speak about in the. The capital planning subcommittee report. I spoke to Michelle earlier today and the security systems of the building and all of that is covered. But um, you know, the classroom, we had our first classroom projector die um a couple of weeks ago. And we thankfully had one that we could replace it with, but that's not gonna be the first one that goes. Uh, access points, Wi-Fi access points typically have a life of about seven or eight years. This is year six. Um, the point-of-sale systems haven't been updated. I think the point-of-sale systems in the cafeteria came from the old building. So that's something that we should probably look at. Um, the switching equipment, right? Um, the stuff that, you know, all of the ethernet ports all around the building, the cable isn't fine, but eventually we'll have to replace the stuff in the, the network closets. Um, access control, security cameras, digital signage and more. There's, you know, there's no shortage, shortage of things to replace. Um, so I'll have a better plan to present and we can, you can tell me where we want to have that go first. Probably makes sense for it to go through the capital planning subcommittee, but that's totally up to you. Um, another thing that we discovered when we moved in, we moved animal science into uh Twenty Mill Street. Was that nine-one-one was working. Um, but the E nine-one-one and the um, the, the, what we have to report to the. The dispatcher, right, was not totally correct in Massachusetts. Um, I believe what would be discovered is that you're required to report down to the room. Um, where the person is calling nine-one-one from and we were just giving the address. Um, so we've gone through and for every classroom phone uh in our reports, uh wing of the, the building. Address, address, building, wing, uh floor and classroom. Um, so the uh, the dispatcher would see all of that if someone were to call nine-one-one. Uh, we changed our E nine-one-one callback number um because they were um very generic numbers. That got misdialed a lot as people who are on the E nine-one-one callback queue know. Um, we get a lot of, we got a couple in a row, somebody was trying to turn off the gas at their house um because. Uh, the number was one digit off and the numbers were is seven eight one, two seven four, one thousand and one thousand and one, which are very easily misdialed. And it caused a lot of panic. So we changed to things that are a little bit harder to dial. We also um. Uh, we fixed, so we fixed that and then we fixed the, the nine-one-one locations. Uh, we also did some overbreak. We did some updates to the firewall. Uh, to make things a little bit more secure. And that was my very short presentation as promised, but I hope it gave you the information that you are looking for. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Aaron, you, you.
Thank you. Yep, thank you. Just got myself off mute. Thank you, Drew. That's, that's a pretty thorough report and this is a subject that keeps me up at night for sure. And one of the things I'm wondering about is um, in your work with Microsoft, do they provide? Tip, tips that you can pass along to staff and students around the phishing that's happening through mobile texting now? Um, because that's a point of vulnerability, particularly if the students are accessing Wi-Fi through their phones in the school. And, and all of that. There seems to be more and more of that going on now and really bright people are getting scammed for a lot of money now. Um, thinking that their bank is texting them when it's not their bank and so forth and so on, so.
Sure. Um, Microsoft doesn't. I'm sure Sofos does. Um, and one of the things that I'm thinking about bringing back, we used to have the tech tick. Tech tip Tuesdays. Um, that might come back and then maybe we'll have like cyber tip Thursday, I don't know, something. Uh, just, you know, telling all of the, the, all of our stakeholders, student staff and all um, just giving tips every once in a while. I, I believe uh Anthony can correct me if I'm wrong. I'm gonna have some time at the, the faculty meeting next week and we're gonna talk through. Some of the changes that have happened um specifically around the phones. Um, but also uh the phishing that we're seeing coming more and more. Uh, we do already do phishing training. But it's tough. Um, you know, people are busy and I'm hoping with the incentive of PDPs. Then we can get more staff members on board to actually complete it. But I will look into um some tips around the, the cell phone phishing. That's, that's great, Sarah. Thank you.
Maybe they have something that just makes it easy for you to pass along, so you don't have to reinvent the wheel.
Sure.
Any other questions from school fee members? If not, thank you, Drew. I appreciate your work on this. Uh, interrelated topic uh is the final. But uh, uh, agenda item under the interim superintendent's report is the subject of artificial intelligence. Which is uh. Quite prevalent among uh just schools, but society.
Socks.
Have asked um. Mr. Cherry, I'll have to do some work on that um so he can report it to the uh school committee. So uh, we yield the floor to Anthony.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Good evening, everyone. Let's get my screen here. Sure, it's gonna do the display. See if I can remember what to do here, Drew.
Hit display settings and then.
Yeah, sorry. I just had to move the bar first on there. There we go. That work?
Yes.
All right, awesome. All right, good evening, everyone. So, I mean, we could talk about artificial intelligence for hours as it is eight-thirty at night. We will not talk about it for hours. Um, and we're gonna try to focus, you know, on AI in education. So obviously, artificial intelligence is everywhere now. Uh, we'll kinda narrow our focus for this evening on uh, AI in education. I will just do a quick, kinda like, let me see, why is it advancing? There we go. Uh, overview of AI. I don't know where all of you all stand on your understanding of AI. Talk very briefly about the national perspective and the um, statewide perspective in terms of any kind of information that's come out from DESI or the state. Um, regarding AI and education, and then we, we conducted a survey of our staff. Um, and we wanna just kinda share where we're at with AI. Um, and maybe some things to consider um, as a school committee with developing potentially policy. Oh, I know there's, that's definitely something the teachers would like to see is just some guidelines um, and expectations. So, just real quick, as AI itself is not new, uh, it's been around since the nineteen fifties. Um, in terms of defining what it was, trying to move you guys out of the way, so I can see this too. Um, you know, you would start to probably recognize some of these things depending on just pop culture um, with Deep Blue, which defeated um, the chess champion, um, Google search uses AI. In the two thousands teens, you started seeing things like Siri, um, so those are virtual assistants on smartphones. Um, so that's deep learning, transforming AI capabilities. Um, then you start seeing it more recently in autonomous uh, systems and everyday devices, so you know, self-driving cars. But really where the floodgates opened was with the rise of generative AI. Um, and this is where, you know, really in education, where we kinda wanna start our focus. So there's all different kinds of AI, and like I said, generative AI is the one that can create content, that's text, that's images, it's code, um, it's music. I don't know if you, you think it can like create songs that it sounds like. You know, Kurt Cobain wrote, right? So I, I heard that one recently. Um, lots of deep fakes and things like that. There's also a whole nother level of AI that doesn't exist yet. That's the stuff that um, you actually should be scared of. Um, this stuff is, you know, just concerning on a, on a number of different levels when we talk about generative AI. And we talked about generative AI, just some kind of things that you may have heard of, so uh, Chat G P T, which is through OpenAI. Um, that's the, the symbol in the middle, things like Copilot, which if you go on your Edge browser will come up. Uh, Google's products Gemini uh, was formerly Ba- uh, Bard, Claude, and then Alpha Code. This is obviously just a small snippet of all the different generative AI programs that exist now. And so a lot of these pull from G P T. Um, and the interesting thing about that is it is cut at like twenty-twenty-one. So if you went and tried to research something that's happened more recently and, so excuse me, went to go ask, you know, Chat G P T about something more recently and the three-point-five version, it wouldn't know what you were talking about because it's not connected to the internet. Uh, Google's is connected to the internet. Um, and some of the other ones operate, most of them operate off the G P T system. Um, so in education, there are obviously a number of pros and cons. This is obviously just a, a general overview. Um, it can help with content development and differentiation, assessment design, uh, feedback, uh, personalized tutoring. It can be kind of a, a, a partner in creativity and collaboration. Um, it can really help with some operational efficiencies. However, and this is the biggest one, and you'll see this in the survey, is the concerns around plagiarism and academic dishonesty. Um, you know, accountability for students and teachers. Uh, there's definitely some issues with privacy and unauthorized data collection. This is something that Drew and I have already been working on, um, uh, through one of the organizations he belongs to in terms of their what do you call it, recommendation in terms of working with Chat G P T with students, um, as they will, they have refused to sign any data privacy agreements. Um, over reliance in the uh, loss of critical thinking and perpetuating societal bias. So one thing you have to remember is that whether it's live connected to um, the internet or connected to, you know, uh, a large language model that was developed prior to, using the internet prior to twenty-twenty-one, it's all coming from the internet, right? And we know that the internet is an incredibly biased resource. Um, so um, this is something that we need to be super careful with, with AI everywhere, but especially in education. So just nationally, so the um, Office of Educational Technology through the United States government did a um, report in May of twenty-twenty-three on artificial intelligence and the future of teaching and learning. I will share this all out with you if you haven't had a chance to read through it yourselves. Um, and it kinda goes through some key insights, some like the positives, obviously, how it can support educators, it can be a good feedback loop. Um, can address student variability, learning variability, but of course, there are risks, um, some of which we know about and some of which we have yet to predict. Um, and then making some recommendations, and I think some of the most important ones that I would put to is that, you know, we wanna inform and involve our educators um, in terms of learning about these different tools, what they're capable of. Um, so that we can help our students learn about them. Um, and, you know, also developing those guardrails and guidelines uh, for protecting our students, uh, their privacy and to protect academic integrity as well. And then from the state, so I tried to do some research um, on the DESI website to see if I could find anything uh, where they, you know, made any statements about this, and at least in the Board of Education meetings, it, it hasn't come up in the last year. It's come up, meaning like they've mentioned the words, but not in any um, extensive um, discussion, but the um, Digital Learning Advisory Council, um, which is kinda like the V C T E Advisory Council, so it's a group of different stakeholders who, you know, focus on one specific area, in this case, digital learning, and then make recommendations to the Board of Education. So the last time the meeting notes were posted was from the December twentieth meeting. They did have a meeting on March twentieth. Um, but they don't post the meeting notes until the following meeting, which I believe is in June. Um, but from DESI, in quotes, from the meeting minutes, was that DESI has not come out with any formal guidelines uh, related to new developments in AI. It's quickly evolving, difficult to create a policy and recommendations that is relevant to all stakeholders, so. Um, they're not coming out with a policy yet, but it is certainly something they're talking about and they, you can see that kinda the areas that they wanna make sure are kept at the forefront are, um, you know, cybersecurity, security and data privacy, leveraging it um, in the computer science standards. Um, and, you know, kinda teaching students how to use this in a safe way. The other thing is this idea of digital equity. So ensuring that students, regardless of where they're, you know, their uh, their zip code, that they have the same access to learn about and to.
Make sure everybody's on mute, please.
Um, so that's kinda where DESI is right now, so we'll see. It was on the agenda for the, the March meeting, but we'll, it'll be interesting to see what they kind of discussed, um, when the meeting minutes are posted. And then just from like a state level, um, the state is, is of course, you know, at the forefront of uh, studying generative AI. However, I will say that it's mostly geared towards industry and business. It's not, uh, at least this task force that was developed um, at the beginning of this year. Um, wasn't focused on K twelve education. Um, it was really about like how to kind of, you know, use AI, not how to kind of regulate it. So I just, that's kinda where the, the state stands with AI at the moment. Um, sorry, what's in this moving forward? So we conducted a survey of AI, just so we could give you all of some perspective on where our staff stands with the use of AI, how they feel about AI, how they're using it, if they're using it with the students. Uh, we did do a tech P D carousel um, at the end of March, where our teachers do micro-professional developments for their colleagues. And two of the sessions were on artificial intelligence, one how teachers can use it and one how students could potentially use it. Those were run by Bruce Gerard, who's an English teacher, and uh, Corey Dolan, who's in one of our advanced manufacturing teachers. That was the most attended. Those two P Ds were the most attended out of all the professional development sessions that were offered that day. Um, so people are interested in it. So we, Sarah Art, our interim C T E director, and I put together a survey. Um, about seventy-five percent of the staff responded, which is a pretty good response rate. Uh, fifty, so a higher percentage were kinda from the academic side than the C T E side. Um, and then obviously from um, some of the other areas, our guidance counselors, our technical assistants and our nurses. So this, we kinda asked, you know, how do you feel about AI? How do you use it? Um, so we had, um, there was one category that no one responded, yes, which I, I guess is good, which is that I'm terrified of it and want nothing to do with it. So zero percent of the respondents said that. Um, uh, fifteen percent I know, said I know about it, but don't use it. Thirty-three percent said I'm apprehensive about it, but have been cautiously experimenting with it. Eighteen percent said they're embracing, embracing it and using it themselves, but not with their students and twenty-two. Oh, I got my numbers wrong here, I'm sorry. I'm writing it, I'm reading it on the side. Uh, and twelve percent said I'm embracing it and using it both myself and with my students, so. This kinda, if anyone's familiar with like um, a diffusion of innovation curve, this is pretty much how that typically lines up, where you have a, a small amount of innovators who are gonna use it, whether you're talking about it or not. Um, then your early adopters, who really just need some guidelines and will start kind of using it, whether for themselves or with their students. Then you have early adopters who need like, they need a little proof of concept before they're gonna kinda take it on. Your late adopters um, who are gonna need a lot more, you know, support and, and maybe forced to use it, but will, and they're, they're, they're prepared to do that. And then you have what are called laggards, and those are folks who aren't gonna use it. They're just not gonna use it. Um, in a different innovation situations, those folks might, you know, leave the profession, they might leave their organization, you know. I don't see that happening with AI and uh, Minuteman, but that's just how that particular curve works. And I would say that based on this initial survey, we kinda fall into that division, that diffusion of innovation curve, which I think is uh, good. Um, so we kinda talked just, we kinda gave them a list of things that they might be concerned about. Like I mentioned, nationally, this is the issue. This is the issue here. People are concerned about cheating. I think I have another slide that just specifically about cheating. Um, the majority are not sure how this is gonna play out in education, whether it's gonna have a positive or negative impact. Um, although I will say that, so they could select, they could select, they didn't have to choose between positive or negative, so they said they're not sure. But in a three-to-one ratio, they feel like it's gonna have a negative impact on uh, the, on education, K twelve education. Um, fifty percent feel it can make them more uh, efficient professionally, about a third feel it could support student learning. And, but our teachers are, they get it, they understand what's going on, and they know that our students need to learn how to use it effectively and ethically, uh, which kinda goes back to that academic integrity piece. Yeah, excuse me. So how are our stu- how are our teachers who are using it professionally, using it? Uh, they're using it to create discussion questions, quiz questions. Um, as kind of a writing assistant for themselves, uh, leveling readings, which, you know, if folks are familiar with programs like Newzella or Newz- Newzella, that will do it for you, but Chat G P T has the ability where you can kinda say like, can you write this at a one-thousand Lexile level? And it'll kinda rewrite it for students, just kinda creating greater levels of access. Um, things like clarifying assignments, creating images, just brainstorming ideas for, you know, lesson ideas, objectives, vocabulary, creating procedures. So, you know, teachers are finding kind of ways that those things that take a long time to do often, um, but Chat G P T or whatever they're using, um, can kinda speed that process up. I will say, and this is the key with AI, this is just a editorial or my own personal opinion, is that if you don't actually know how to do any of these things yourself, then the stuff isn't always good. So you really need to be able to like, take it, it's a good way to speed the process up, but you need to always go through, edit, see if those questions are good. Um, so it's a good productivity tool, um, but I would tell you that if you don't know how to lesson plan and it gives you a lesson plan, it not, is not necessarily going to be a good lesson plan. Um, and that just kinda goes for most things, I think, with generative AI. So not many teachers, very few are using it with students, um, so far in terms of like the, the generative AI piece. Um, there are some programs that do use generative AI, I know like Imprezi will help create a format for you, um, which will kinda again, speed up a little bit of the process, doesn't create the content, which is, which is good, but it will kinda help with you with the formatting. Um, in D B C, which is a place where, excuse me, generative AI, I think they might be most nervous about it as they're use, learning how to use it. Um, as like a model and how AI does it versus how you might do it manually, so kinda learning, learning from it. Uh, I sat in a discussion in D B C one day and they were doing like the different trends in uh, design for the, for twenty-twenty-four. And one of the things was AI and, you know, so they're, they're talking about it, but AI imagery is kinda, it looks this, a lot of it looks the same. It's not really that great. Um, so it's, it's a certain style, but as we know with design styles change. Um, so it's just an interest, and it is definitely a big part of the conversation in that industry and, and I'm sure in programming and web development, it's gonna be a huge piece as well. Um, they're using it to generate images for presentations, generate outlines for writing. Um, some of it will actually use it to like, see if it's right, right? So you have AI generate something and then you'll kinda go and correct, correct that content. Um, using it to interrogate readings and kinda as a tutor uh, for tests and quizzes. So this is happening, not at really a super high level at this, at this point. Some of our innovator teachers are, are playing around with it with their students. Um, but also trying to teach them all the pitfalls that go along with it as well, like if people have heard that the term that we use with generative AI is that it hallucinates, so it will give you incorrect information. Um, and it, what, what AI wants to do is it wants, it wants to give you an answer, right? Even if it's wrong, so it will give you incorrect answers, um, which is why you really need to fact-check it. So cheating, like I said, cheating is probably the biggest concern right now with AI, or we'll get to some of the other concerns, but um, with AI, and the, the truth is that AI detectors, like it doesn't, they don't work. Yes, you can ask Chat G P T, Chat G P T, if it wrote it, it might say yes, it might say no. Even that's not accurate. There are different tools, obviously, that keep coming out. The best one I think I saw is accurate at like a eighteen percent rate, which is obviously not good. Um, for those of us who have been like history or English teachers, we used to use like turnitin.com. Um, and that would flag all the different places from the internet kids had copy and paste it from. That just doesn't work with uh, generative AI, because what it's doing is it's predicting, it's using a predictive model where it predicts what the next word is, and that's drawing from a much larger, the whole internet, not just one particular site. Um, so how are our teachers kind of combating this to the best of their ability? Um, one is, they're using the traditional match, methods that we would use to catch plagiarism, right? Plagiarism. So we are familiar with how our students write, so when something comes to us that seems drastically different, we can often identify that it may or may not be, you know, um, their work. So we'll have conversations with them. Um, you might ask them a, a question about the assignment and see if they can answer it. You might ask them the right part of it. Um, of course, we're teaching explicitly about academic honesty and integrity and plagiarism. Um, in math, we're asking students to show their work. We know that photo math, which is not new, actually, that's, that's not generative AI. That's just AI, um, has been able to solve math problems for a long time. So we need them to show their work, um, and just having discussions with students. So we have to kinda almost take an old-school approach to a new school problem, um, in terms of addressing uh, cheating with uh, generative AI. There was a study that came out from Stanford recently, uh, by a, I forget the name of the professor, I apologize. Uh, but his whole study, what he studies is cheating. Um, and from this, from his survey and his research so far, and this is obviously early, again, Chat G P T was just released in November of twenty-twenty, what year is this, twenty-twenty-two, uh, so it's, it's not, it's still new. Uh, but cheating had not gone up dramatically, um, as a result of these things, and the, the findings there are essentially people who were gonna cheat before are gonna just use this new tool to cheat and that most folks know it's the wrong thing to do and, and, and don't do it. Um, again, and, but there are different schools that are approaching it differently. And what I mean, schools like universities right now, where they might instruct people to use AI, they might instruct them not to use it. They might have to cite how they used it. Um, one of our English teachers had students doing an assignment and this, the, one of the kids in his class, uh, did this really interesting, she wrote her essay and then she plugged it into, and put that in. And then she plugged it into chat, Chat G P T, asked for some feedback on it, and then she reflected, wrote down her reflection on the feedback she got, right? Um, so it was just interesting to see how she used that as like a tool. Um, she had her original piece, you know, she still, she submitted the original piece. She didn't submit the Chat G P T part, but she showed the teacher how she kinda like went through the process. So there's, you know, there's some she, she, that's a class where they're kinda learning more about how to use it, so um, it's encouraging to see people using it the right way. But we always know people will, you know. But we always know people will, you know, take some shortcuts in some cases. And so the overall takeaways from the survey were that teachers understand that AI is part of both the present and the future and it's not going away. Um, what I think is most important, I kind of alluded to this when I talked about like teachers and lesson planning and needing to know how to do it to make it really an effective tool, is that we're really trying to find this balance between this incredibly powerful productivity tool with ensuring students have foundational literacy and writing skills across the curriculum as well as critical thinking and problem solving. I mean, the conversations we're having at the school level with myself and my colleagues is, um. If we just let the computers do all of our work for us, then no one's gonna know how to think anymore. No one's gonna know how to write. Um, and these are critical pieces about being human, right? So a lot of what we need to ensure is that students have those foundational skills so they can use AI in a productive, ethical and effective manner. Um. And that's, finding that balance is gonna be tough and we're in this, you know, rapidly evolving ecosystem of technology. And, you know, we're gonna, teachers need to learn about it, students need to learn about it. Um, and we need to find that balance. Um, the other piece is just, excuse me, wanting, you know, guidelines for ethical and appropriate use and consequences when those guidelines are not met. So we're in this tricky situation where we can't actually tell if something has been written by AI unless a student admits to it. Um, or we can really, you know, kind of go through those traditional methods, but having some guidelines as well as students understanding what the consequences are for that um would be important. And so just kind of, and I know this has got a lot of information on this slide, but Ed Week did a survey and uh wrote, put an article out in February of this year uh around AI policy. And I know as a school committee policy is, is, you know, obviously an important part of your role. Um, and so these are just some things to consider as you, you start to think about, you know, developing AI policy um for the district. Um. And so like things to really keep in mind are like data privacy, ethical use, academic integrity, equitable access, educational standards alignment, preparation for future workforce and effective policies for a framework for responsible, equitable and effective use of AI in education. So there's a bunch of different resources that I'll share with you all. Uh, the public anal, analysis for California education or PACE has a lot of great resources on developing um AI policy, Carnegie Mellon University, their um Everly Center has some great examples of how to um uh create like academic integrity policies around AI and that's whether you want to have like no AI, we, we don't believe in this, or some, you know, hybrid of where it's appropriate. So those are a couple of resources. Um, AI for education and Teach AI are also two great resources for folks to learn about uh AI in education. Um, there's only two states that I think started the year with AI policy, which are California and Oregon. I know there's a lot of states who are looking at it right now. Um. But it's not like, it's not like we're super far behind. It's just a rapidly evolving piece. And it would be a policy you would need to revisit regularly, not like yearly, like by, like, you know, every six months or so, uh, because of the rapid, I know Alice, um, because of the rapid evolution of the technology where your policy could become outdated, you know, very quickly. Um. So that's um where we are with AI. I don't claim to be an expert on AI. I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. Um. But hopefully this gives you guys a little picture into where we're at with uh the use of artificial intelligence at Minuteman. Let's stop the share. Yeah, Alice.
I think you should keep this report, um, maybe even keep it with the minutes because it's a historical document. This is the very beginning of the conversations about AI and education, and I am always sensitive to the future poor historian looking at what's going on and trying to understand what happened back then. Um, I, I feel like this is interesting because it's just a snapshot and a kind of reflection on where is Minuteman at this moment? And those things are very hard to find in, in the first sort of a primary source way. The second thing I was thinking about is that, you know, we're all kind of passive users of AI, whether we want to be or not, because a lot of what's on the internet, um, some of it is pure nonsense, but there's some of it that is generated by this stuff already. You know, and because Chat G P T is just taking the next word, they're taking the next word sometimes from things that were written by Chat G P T. So you know, it, it's going to become very confusing pretty quickly. And I agree with you, Anthony, about the about the um how fast it's gonna change, but I, I think that report is very interesting just as a reflection of, of the moment. And um I, I do hope you'll keep it somewhere and it doesn't just disappear.
Of course.
Anthony, if you um forward that to me, I can include it in the minutes for this meeting.
Absolutely.
Any uh other questions for Anthony? Thank you, Anthony. Appreciate it.
Yep.
That includes the interim superintendent's report.
Thank you. We are on to interim assistant superintendent of student services report, Dr. Amy Perrot, Peralt. And it is um eight forty-nine. So just so anybody who's interested.
Good evening, everyone. It is eight forty-nine, so I'm gonna talk quick and briefly. But I do have two kind of exciting things that I wanted to share um from my world. First is we're getting to the end of the school year and I just wanted to give a little update on the CPAC. That is our special education parent advisory council. Um, it's an organization to support parents with students, really any parent, but primarily student, parents with students who have parents who have students that are served by an I E P or five oh four. Um, historically, it's been extremely difficult to get um parent participation in our CPACs. I think um it, cause we're spread out so far, nobody wants to come to a meeting. Um, now that we're doing it virtually, the, the participation has gone up. Um, but it's still at the same time, I feel like when parents have students in high school, they, they've had experience with I E Ps and special education for such a number of years, I think they have a handle on it and maybe they feel they don't need as much support. Um, but this year we had uh two great parent co-chairs. Um, and we really had more participation than we've had in a really long time. So that's exciting. Um, we put on three presentations. I did one on the overview of special education services at Minuteman with a Q and A and that was pretty well attended. Um, we did a presentation um by the uh Federation for Children with Special Knees, which Minuteman is a member of. They came in and did a presentation on transition and students trying to transitioning out of high school. And then um as part of our tiered focus monitoring review this year, Desi came in and did an overview for our parents on what that would look like. Um, it's kind of like an audit of our special education services. Um, and then we're looking to the future to do one uh a presentation on the new I E P. That's a big thing coming up for us for next year. Um, again, I talk about our two co-chairs, which are amazing. They get the word out. We have a Facebook page for the CPAC, also sharing things on the Minuteman parent page. Again, being part of um members of the Federation who are on the listserv, so they get all the updates and they share them out. Um, so some good interaction going back and forth. However, our co-chairs both have rising seniors, so it would be great if we could get some more parents involved and then they could kind of do a year together and then take the reins. Um, I feel like we got a tiny bit of momentum going and it would be great to keep it going. Um, that's the ball, ju-, the gist for CPAC. Any questions?
Um, just, um, thank you, Amy. I appreciate that. Just as an F Y I, as a member of um Mass PAC, the Federation is doing a whole series of parent trainings on the new I E P form, which you are eligible for, for free. So just put that out there. Thank you.
Other questions?
Charlene.
Um, and Pam, forgive me if I'm wrong or correct me if I'm wrong, but you can also go to the Federation website. If you want to get, you know, um, a, a head, head start on these programs and not wait until next year. Um, you can watch these digitally or on, virtually online.
Okay. Um, so and then my second one is that I just wanted to talk about something that's near and dear to my heart, um, mental health. And we received a mental health grant um this year, the continuation grant from one we had last year. And we trained seven staff to be trainers. So it's a train the trainer model for mental health first aid, which is an evidence-based um program that teaches participants about mental health and substance use. And it's geared for any adult to gain some skills to be able to talk to any student. Um, not a practitioner, like just anybody that cares about a kid. It'll give you skills to talk about mental health or substance use. Um, so it's just fabulous. And to have seven staff members trained as trainers, to me is exciting. Um, and it's a great cross-section. We have counseling staff, admin, academic staff, C T E staff, like it, it's a great cross-section. Um, and what we're looking to do with the rest of the grant money we have is, um, luckily we get out a little early this year, so we have some time in June. Um, to offer trainings for any of the staff members that want to come in. It's a one-day training to just be trained in it. And since we have uh seven trainers, we can probably get a good number of people that want to come in and be trained. And then, you know, we're gonna grow it throughout the year, like our certifications, as long as we do two trainings a year, we stay certified forever. So as, um, you know, we can look at different P Ds or um, if people are interested in doing like a Saturday class, cause they hear how awesome it is and they want to come in. If the school committee wanted to be trained in mental health first aid, we could do that. Um, we've the group of us have talked about talking with our member towns, like if we could, if they wanted to share and we would go and do staff that, like, there's a whole bunch of ways to share and increase the knowledge, which is just exciting. Um, I do want to give a shout out to Corey Nicholson and Kyla Callahan, who are my wonderful social workers who are administrating this grant and doing all the organizing and the setting up and the billing and the whole nine yards, and they've just done a fabulous job. Um, and again, you can tell I'm really excited because this is a big deal. Um, so I just wanted to share. Any questions?
Oh, yeah, Sharon and then Sarah.
Um, I, I just want to say thanks for doing that because I think post-COVID mental health issues have been so huge for our kids. So the commitment that you're making to make sure that our faculty can help our kids is awesome. So thank you.
I, I wanted to echo that also, and it's a, it's a national epidemic now. It's not even just with, with students. Um, and I would be interested in participating in the training if there's other um, school committee folks, or I could join something that you might have in progress. I could just take time off from work.
Okay. Get that going. All right. Thank you.
Okay, the last thing, um, both of these are mine and very, very short, uh, subcommittee report. Policy Subcommittee, so the Policy Subcommittee is um Sharon Musto. Me, Dr. Peralt is the administrative um coordinator of this, and we sometimes have a visitor of Charlene Cabral, who um offers her legal insight too and just her thoughts. Um, we have been working on section I, which is sort of instructional policies for since September. And um we are just today finished with a second go-round of reviewing section I, and it's going to come back with revisions for in a couple of weeks. And then hopefully we're gonna get it to you guys by the end of the year. Cross your fingers. It's a huge section. So, and it's complicated. And the other thing that we're trying to fix is the duplication of documents that it causes headaches around the state for every school district where you have it in the handbook and you have it in the manual. And every time you change one, it's out of sync with the other and state law changes and so forth. So we're hoping to solve that problem as well. That's the end of the policy report. Any questions about the policies? You're gonna have a huge amount of reading shortly, just warning you. You're gonna be reading like War and Peace. Okay, the next thing is the capital planning subcommittee. And I actually wrote down what I had to say because I knew I would be tired. Hang on. So we had a packed agenda. We had our sort of second meeting of the capital planning subcommittee. And let me just tell you who was there. We had Kevin Mahoney, Michelle Rosendis, Maggie Sharon, Ford Spalding, me, Julia and Heidi Driscoll and Jeff Stuland sat in as uh listening members of the sort of the school community. So um, the building opened in twenty nineteen and that's, so that's been five years almost and we all think about our responsibility to maintain and keep the school's assets in tip-top condition and many districts let, let this slide. They build a new building, they breathe a big sigh of relief and then things don't happen for a number of years and then things are starting to go wrong and we are not gonna be that district. So we heard updates on the North Building, the Capital Skills Grant Award, Future Capital Skills Grant Award Opportunities, the status of the East Building, the new equipment in the Wellness Fitness Center and progress on a ten-year capital plan and the district's intention to enlist a consultant to gather the data for that plan. We did not explicitly talk about um anything to do with um uh uh, data equipment and cameras and stuff like that in the building at this meeting. So we, we determined that there really are two types of planning. And one is planning year-over-year maintenance and replacement schedules and projecting financial impacts. And the second is understanding how a district develops strategic plan that looks at the educational program plan and related space and furnishing requirements will drive capital planning and space usage needs, which is a much different way to look at it. And we will meet again on May ninth. So that's my report on capital planning. Uh, are there questions on that? No, so seeing none. We have adjournment motion. So we have a motion to adjourn at eight fifty-nine.
So moved. Second.
Musto and Monique. We could take a vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Sarah Monique Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
David Willoughby Concord, yes.
Naomi Sharon Dover, yes.
Charlene Cabral Lancaster, yes.
Erin Musto Lexington, yes.
Staluka, Stow, yes. Live long and prosper. They hi to Jeff, cause he's gonna watch.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.